We didn't even everyone to the committee of the whole for the February 24, 2021 meeting. So the first thing in the is to call to the order to the agenda to the meeting. The second is the pledge to allegiance. So please stand up. I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So next in our agenda is roll call.
Arata Frata?
Yeah.
Cloder? Gerhard?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Maldonado?
He's here.
He's here.
Richardson?
Here.
Schroder?
Here.
Strassman?
Here.
Udell?
Here.
We've got a core full house.
All right. Thank you. So next is approval of the minute from the January 27 meeting. So I need a motion.
I can move approval.
Any question, discussion?
We need a second?
Oh, second. Okay.
Second.
Any question, discussion? All does the favor of approving the minute from January 27 meeting say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now is the motion carries. So next in our agenda is public appearance for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone in the chambers?
No one's in the chambers.
Online on the speaker on the phone? No, okay. Thank you. So next we're moving to the agenda item for tonight meeting and we have three presentation. And the first one is one calling creating a respectful workplace. I want to introduce Danielle Patton from City and Village Mutual Insurance Company. So welcome to Fitchburg. So you're in charge now.
Thank you. All right. So as you just said, I'm Dani Patton, Danielle Patton. I'm with Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company and tonight I'm going to be facilitating a training. High level, it's on anti harassment. I'm going to bring it down onto the level of what you'll oftentimes see as common council members or older persons. I've titled this training at creating a respectful workplace because they do intertwine it some components on civility. And from my lens, I feel with anti harassment and civility, it kind of makes up the entire package of how you can create a respectful workplace. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen right now. Bear with me. I hope this works. All right. Does everybody see the slides?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. Okay. I'm off to a good start then. Okay. So. As I said, you know, in the beginning, the purpose of this presentation tonight is just to give you a high overview of what is illegal harassment, identifying the behaviors that are unprofessional, prohibited, illegal, and also do a high level overview of what is bullying and the difference between bullying and harassment and then identifying what is acceptable workplace conduct. Now, just a quick reference, there's two pieces of law that really they oversee what the guidelines and the parameters fall into when you can consider something harassment. And that would be the Wisconsin Fair Employment Act, which prohibits employers, employment agencies, labor unions, and licensing agencies who discriminate against employees and job applicants based on any of the following categories that I have here in hold such as age, arrest and/or conviction records, sex, sexual orientation, and military status and race. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 is another component that plays in. And this prohibits any discrimination, discrimination, or harassment based on race, color, religion, sex, and national origin. So you're going to see a few times throughout this presentation, I'm going to hone in on some of those areas. So what is the difference between bullying and harassment? So bullying and harassment, even though they're very closely related, they're really not the same. The difference between bullying and harassment is that bullying is used to offend or undermine someone's internal characteristics, whereas harassment usually attacks more physical traits. The key difference areas would be, you know, levels of physical contact, how outward or noticeable the act may be, and whether the act deviates strongly from workplace activities and how it can target one's protected characteristic. So again, I went back to the protected areas. So here I just want to give you a quick screenshot so you can see a side by side the difference between bullying and harassment. Bowling occurs when a person commits offensive, intimidating, malicious, or insulting behavior. This can cause often an emotional harm, but also physical harm. And then harassment is illegal when the behavior is directed at what I referenced before, a protected class. And again, referencing the Civil Rights Act of 1964. I have to find my mouse. I apologize. So I always use this slide as a moment to do self-reflection. How do you identify harassment? So if somebody came to you today and said, what is harassment? How would you respond to them? In my mind, harassment is any unwelcome conduct that's based on one's sex or membership in another protected category. And this is where you can start to dive in to the areas in which harassment can be categorized like quid pro quo, hostile work environment, things like that. I'm going to touch base on those in further detail and give you some better examples on how that can protein in the common council environment as well. So how do you know if something is harassment? It's deliberate or repeated behavior. Okay? It is unwelcome, not asked for, and not returned, so it is one-sided. So if you were to say something in an environment that maybe could be offensive to others, that wasn't the intent to begin with, someone comes up to you and says, hey, Jim or Debbie, I really did not care for that. That was very offensive to me. The response of, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, and you never do it again, wouldn't necessarily deem it to be harassment. Now, if someone were to approach you and say, your comment was offensive and you basically just kept doing it and repeated doing it, maybe even escalated the way in which you do it, that could be deemed harassment. Again, it is directly pointed towards one of those protected areas as well. So what are some of the key elements or points that you think must be present for something to be considered harassment or sexual harassment? So in this area, I tend to look at the difference between what is harassment and then what is just plain and simple inappropriate behavior. So an example of harassment would be there is an employee and an individual walks by and smacks them on the bottom. It does not matter if it's a male employee or female employee. If it is unwanted, it's offensive, it is one-sided, that could be deemed harassment. Now, if you have an employee and a supervisor, let's say, the supervisor walks past the employee and says, hey, Baldy, how's it going today? And the employee just so happens to be a tall bald man. That is not harassment. Being bald does not fall under a protected class. However, that would be deemed very inappropriate or unprofessional behavior. So I just wanted to give you a quick side by side comparison. Oftentimes, from my experience in the HR world, people often deem everything in the sun that is offensive as harassment. So I just wanted to give you a quick two guy comparison as to what's the difference between harassment and utterly inappropriate or professional behavior. So we're going to hit here quickly because I want to be very respectful of your time this evening. But the different forms of harassment. So there's hostile work environment, quid pro quo, and then harassment by harassment by agent or supervisor of the employer. So when we think of a hostile work environment, you have to give consideration to all the circumstances. So the frequency and severity of the conduct, whether it is threatening and or humiliating or merely just offensive, and whether the harassment unreasonably interferes with the employee's work. So looking at it from the lens of common counsel, for example, maybe discussing sex acts or using sexually suggestive language, that could create a hostile work environment. Telling offensive jokes about protected categories of people could be deemed as a hostile work environment. Using slurs or insensitive terms, whether it be during your common council meetings or, you know, face to face with department heads that you may have to work with frequently, or maybe even the residents who you have to work with as your constituents. It could even go as far as obstruction of someone's movements, such as blocking them from leaving their office or cubicle or workspace. On a virtual cycle, those could be things that people could deem as a hostile work environment. So let's just name a few examples. When we think of quid pro quo, it means this for that. So you do something for me and I will do something for you. Or if you don't do something for me, I will do something to you. When it comes to quid pro quo, it usually involves a supervisor, an employee, or somebody of a higher level in an organization with somebody lower in the organization. There's usually some sort of onset of intimidation factor in there because the person who has the higher seat at the table, they have a sense of power almost over the persons that they're talking to or working with. So a lot of times what I have found, just to give a comparison, I think of like maybe a common counsel, is if you have a public works department, all right, and there's a street that needs to be prepared or repaired, and the person who oversees the district in which the street needs to be repaired, they say, if you don't fix the street in this timeframe that I want it fixed, they're going to make things very hard for them at public works meetings. Or they're going to make sure that all the residents think or know that you as a department head are awful, you're not capable of doing your job. So do this for me, get this done, fix the street, or else things are going to be made very hard for you. That's a quid pro quo. I have seen that actually in my previous life with some council members. Another comparison would be, you know, you see that this project happens this summer this certain way. Otherwise, I will make sure I'm outside every day causing a scene at the location of which the work is being performed. I've also seen older persons do that. They were upset about certain planters going on in the area. They wanted it to be a certain way. Therefore, they took a lawn chair and sat on the corner in which the work was being done. Upgrades are being made and they made pretty obscene comments to the workers who were trying to update the area. So it was one of those things where I'm going to make your life really hard unless you do it my way. So this for that type of example. It also goes to the extreme of either you go on a date with me or I will make sure that you have every crummy job task for the next month. Things like that. It can go to the extreme with supervisors and employees. So quid pro quo, this for that. I think you get the idea. And then the last piece is harassment by agent of an organization. So this typically does involve the supervisor. Per the law, the threshold of tolerance is so much lower because they view as supervision, as management, as higher level employees, you should know better. And when these types of claims are seen through, the organization always has to take on 100% of the responsibility. The law does not have much tolerance for people in supervisory management positions harassing the employees. A lot of times what happens in these positions is that there's some sort of tangible employment action that has to take place. So there could be hiring and firing decisions made, a promotion or failure to promote would take place, work assignments changed, things like that. The next piece I want to touch base on real briefly is the affirmative defense piece. So there's also the component that does protect the employer or the peoples on the other side of the fence, right? The way the law is set up is that individuals do need to take reasonable care to prevent and correct promptly any sexually harassing or harassment behavior. So the employee unreasonably fails to take advantage of any preventative or corrective opportunities provided by the employer or to avoid harm otherwise. So if something's happening, the employee and other people around maybe notice what's happening, they do have an obligation to report the situation. They have the option, the right to go to the mayor, the administrator, however, the org chart falls, human resources, city attorney, and report whatever the situation is. I do understand with common counsel, you're the voice of the people. So the people will be the ones to elect you in and the people are the ones that would remove you if there was ever some sort of some obstacle or issue. So I do understand how the org chart works for common councils. But it'd be a very similar component is that if there was an issue, someone would make the complaint arise to maybe the city attorney, the mayor, and there would have to be some sort of dialogue between whatever common council member it is and then the mayor possibly. Just to give a comparison for that point. And then we're going to touch base on here, what is bullying? So this occurs when a person commits offensive, intimidating, malicious, or insulting behavior. So I'm going to go through here the different types of bullying. There is physical bullying. Okay, this includes any physical contact that would hurt or injure a person like hitting, kicking, punching, et cetera. Verbal bullying, this includes name calling, making offensive remarks, or joking about a person's gender, socioeconomic status, or religion. Keeping in mind, those do fall under yours protected categories we talked about earlier when it came to harassment. Indirect bullying or exclusion. So this would be where somebody includes spreading rumors or stories about somebody, telling others about something that was told to you in a private or excluding group or excluding individuals from a group. And then there's intimidation bullying when a bully threatens someone and someone else and frightens them and that person enough to make them do what that bully wants them to do. Oftentimes with intimidation bullying too, you find that the person doesn't go to work anymore or they don't perform their job tasks as normal. They're thinking more about what's happening at work at that time. And then there's cyber bullying, which is very common now in days because we live in a very virtual world, very virtual platform of everything that we do. So with cyber bullying, it's sending messages, pictures, or information using electronic media computers such as emails and instant messages or DMs. And it also goes all the way to cell phones. So being mindful, if you are issued a city phone, utilizing that to send bullying or harassing remarks is a major issue. So to touch base, some responsibilities are, you know, the employee should always inform the harasser directly that the conduct is unwelcome and it must stop. All right. The employee must report the harassment to the supervisor or management and then document the events of the harasser. Okay? The responsibility of the supervisor or mayor, depending on the org chart, is to provide policy to the employees. Okay? I know that there's a lot of policies that common council members do have to sign off on, they do have to adhere to. So it's very important that that is made very clear right from the onset, what it is the expectation is and what you have to adhere to as member, common council members. Employees should always acknowledge the receipt, discuss the expectations, review these policies periodically. It's always nice to have a great refresher and set the example for your staff. Practice what you preach. That is a big thing. The next piece of this is the retaliation process. So an employee who files charges or participates in any way in the investigation, proceedings, or hearing is protected against retaliation. So in the event that an employee were to file some sort of harassment allegation, whether it be a supervisor or even against a common council member, it is illegal for an employer to retaliate against the whistleblower or other employees who report various types of legal activity. So anybody who files the complaint or shares as a witness has protection under the law against retaliation, whether it be from the person that the allegations are against or the actual employer themselves. So how do we make all of this come together? How do we make it better? I think of it as civility. Civility is key. It's number one in the workplace. When you think of the common council members, you think of the whole org chart of an organization, it's a partnership. So common council works so hard with the city or village to make sure that you're achieving what that common goal is. You're the voice of the people. You're there to make sure that they're heard, their needs are met. And then the people who work for the city or village are there to help and assist to fulfill what those needs are and make sure those projects, everything runs through smoothly. Well, how can we achieve that? How can we have that partnership with one another? By showing civility. So civility is claiming and caring for one's identity, needs, beliefs, without degrading someone else's in the process. We're all very different. We all bring something very different to the table. There's different ages, different races, different sexes, all in this work group. And everybody brings something very unique and wonderful to the table to add perspective. So respect is key in this. So for those who like to look at numbers, that, you know, I say all the touchy feely words, but they say, okay, well, I mean, really, what does it matter? How does this statistically even matter for us? Well, civility in civility can impact your bottom line. So it definitely affects performance. As I said before, between the harassment and the bullying, oftentimes employees just stop either showing up for work or they stop performing their job very well because they're way too focused on what it is that's being said or done every day at work. So two thirds of people cut back on their work efforts. Eighty percent of people lose time worrying about what happened. And 12% of people, they report that they left a job because an uncivil incident. And it may not even be necessarily it was an uncivil incident against them. There was misconduct happening at the workplace. They saw that it wasn't being handled correctly or it just made them that uncomfortable, so they chose to leave. And then 25% report that they are uncivil because that is the example set by their leadership. That's why I said strongly in the last slide, practice what you preach. Be the example that you want your employees to be, that you be the person that your constituents are so excited, they're so happy that they elected in. Okay? So at the end of the day, in all of this, if you're not sure, right? None of this really like clicks. It doesn't really, you know, I really don't get what you're saying, Dani. I don't think I have, I have some things going on, but I think it's just fun and games really, you know? Think about what if my actions made the news? So I used to be a government employee and the one thing I was always reminded of is we work in a fishbowl. Everything we do is for the public eye to know and see. And one thing it was often, it was reiterated and I would reiterate it to my supervisors that I would work with. If they weren't sure about how they were going to handle something, I would say, well, what would you do if your actions made the front page of the newspaper? How would that make you feel? How would that make you react? You are a direct representative of this organization. You need to act, react, say things accordingly. Another way to look at it is would this behavior be acceptable if it was said to your mother, your grandparent, or your spouse? So if you don't care that you're a direct representative of the organization, think about it in terms of your family, you know, the things that you do or you say to other people, you make them feel uncomfortable. What if it was happening to somebody you love? Would that be acceptable? And what if the victim was a son or daughter, or maybe a niece or nephew that you're very close to? The way you're treating that individual, or it's not even you, you're the one watching it happen? You have the job to report the issue, to report what it is you're seeing. And then there's equal power and participation, driving home that even if you're not the one that's, you know, harassing the individuals, there's equal power in not being a part of the solution. So I flew through that. I was told I had a half hour and I did it in 25 minutes. So that's all I have for you this evening. I wanted to be super respectful of your time. If there's anything any of you need or if you have any questions for me, you feel more than free to, you know, let me know now or I can give you my email address, whatever you prefer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dani.
Thank you.
Good, Dani.
Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. So next, we are moving to our next presentation. It's the Wisconsin PSC Office of Energy Innovation Grant and we have Phil Groupie here. So Phil, where are you?
Hi, I'm right here.
Hi. Are you ready?
I am ready. Yeah. Go ahead and do a screen share here. And hopefully you're all seeing that. All right. So I think by this point, it might only be two or three of the alders who were around three years ago when this process was begun. But we finally finished last year and been looking for a time to get on your schedule to come back and present the results of this energy plan. So three years back in early 2018, Fitchburg signed on with six other, on the right screen here, with six other local municipalities, you can see here, partnering with Slipstream, a local, I guess at that point they were called Seventh Wave. They merged with the Energy Center of Wisconsin and became Slipstream, so a third party consultant. The seven municipalities and Slipstream partnered on a $200,000 grant from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission's Office of Energy Innovation. And the purpose of that grant was to put together coordinated energy plans between these seven municipalities. So an effort that would have been a pretty large lift for any one of the seven municipalities to go through on their own. So working together with Slipstream under that grant, they were all able to complete this work in much more efficient fashion. So it's kind of, I know I have an hour here. I'm hoping I can get through it quite a bit quicker than that and leave plenty of time for Q and A, or if we just give you a little bit of your evening back, I'm sure that would be all right as well. The energy plan development overview. So essentially what Slipstream went through with the municipalities was gathering data. That whole portion of this project was actually before I came on board. So that was when Ellen Geisler was the was the sustainability specialist and departed early in 2019. So I came in at the end of 2019. Data collection had mostly been completed by that point and Slipstream was going through developing energy profiles, starting to write up the report, getting final bits of information from the municipalities. And then when the report was completed early last year, it included this full energy profile for each of the cities as well as opportunity analysis, kind of looking at the different areas where each of the municipalities maybe had greater areas to work on for reducing their energy load because they're all municipalities that either have, either have put forward sustainability goals or energy savings goals like Fitchburg did two years ago when the common council committed to a clean energy resolution, pushing Fitchburg to not just get to 25% energy independence by 2025, but trying to reach 100% renewable electricity for all municipal operations by 2030, which is a pretty aggressive goal, one of the more aggressive ones in the state. But along with Fitchburg, these other six municipalities also have various degrees of goals that they've set either formally or informally for saving energy. And so Slipstream was trying to put together these reports to help accomplish that. These are the different elements of city energy usage that Slipstream analyzed. You'll notice with the buildings that only two fire stations are included here. So when this, when they started gathering data, we only had the Firehouse and Safety Building on Lacy Road and the West Fire Station now on Marketplace Drive. The East Fire Station on South Sainin Road was not included. So that's a little bit of an asterisk with this report here that in a couple places I've tried to add consideration of that new fire station, but it is a gap already as Fitchburg keeps growing in one time snapshot report. They also looked at overall operations, including the water utility and fleet vehicles. Just kind of breaking it down by those three large groupings, whether you look at energy usage, energy costs, or CO2 emissions, give or take a little bit, it's roughly a one-third, one-third, one-third split between those three. In terms of CO2 emissions, the fleet is a little bit lower as a lot of the fleet usage is diesel. I believe that tends to be a little bit lower in terms of emissions. The most notable thing here is simply that all three of these sectors, the fleet, the building, the operations, all have room for growth. They're areas that we've been focusing on, probably building energy usage more so than the other two, but all three are areas for potential improvement. If we look at our use types of the Uh if we look at our use types, so the 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 buildings and and certain levels of operations, like the the water utility and the streetlights, um we can see the utility is by far as a single entity, the largest electricity user in the city, but but that also covers a a large number of uh of pump stations and lifts. When you switch over to gas, to the the thermal consumption, uh City Hall, the garage, uh maintenance, Public Works Garage and Maintenance Building are are the highest. But again, we just, we have a number of different areas with um with varying levels of usage here, varying degrees of potential for savings. Notably, here on the right side, you have the library with incredibly low natural gas consumption because it does make use of geothermal heating and cooling, and that uh that requires only electricity consumption from the utility. So one other way to look at this data is the the relative carbon impact, so not just the KWH, not just the thermes, uh but but what are the carbon emissions associated with that? Uh again, because the energy profile is so high, you'll see that, you know, about a quarter of our total CO2 emissions come from our water utility. Uh another third or so is the the fleet and City Hall combined, and then kind of the rest split uh between of our all of our other buildings, operations, and and fleet vehicles. Um and this is kind of trying to give a a really high level, I know I'm kind of uh speeding through these, but just sort of trying to give a high level overview that that we do use a a pretty decent amount of energy, but is split, there's not necessarily one uh dominant use, that there are a number of areas that if we're going to look to cut back on our energy through efficiency, through uh other other energy reductions or through renewable energy, there are a number of different areas to address. So then looking at, th- this is the the snapshot that Slipstream put together based on our twenty eighteen data, trying to get a sense of how much of the energy that we use, uh or in this case, how much of the electricity that we use is renewable. So this is looking at our onsite net metered solar and uh the the difference here between net metered and export metered is that if you have net metered solar, you you've installed solar panels, this is almost all of our roof rooftop panels. Uh those are considered uh behind the meter. So we have a meter that's running from utility energy and we pay for every uh every kilowatt hour for every therm that 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 meter tracks. When we have solar installed as net meters or behind the meter, that's first delivering electricity to that building, and it just keeps the meter from running at all as we're using that solar power. Uh if at any point we're producing more electricity than the building is using, the excess would be sold back to the utility at a at a retail rate. Um at this point, that that's something that occasionally happens, but it's pretty unusual, given the amount of of solar that we have installed on any one building. Uh export metered solar, this would be something like the ground mounted panels at the Public Works Garage. Uh those panels we we installed, and they are on Fitchburg property, but they're connected directly to the grid. Um now that uh those, the the Public Works ones have uh passed their the ten-year contract we signed with Madison Gas and Electric. Uh so we were essentially counting that solar as our own, even though it was going into M G and E's grid, and we were uh being paid by M G and E a special rate for that. Now that we've passed the ten-year contract, that essentially just becomes part of their uh their overall grid energy, but that would be the the difference between that and export meters, whether it's delivered to the grid directly, and then you're working at a special tariff with the utility, uh or if it's directly feeding your building's energy. So this is the amount of net metered solar that we had as of twenty eighteen uh on Fitchburg's property and export metered solar, and this was uh between a two thousand nine Public Works Garage project and then a twenty eleven project at City Hall was the entirety of its export metered solar. Uh we've also, for a number of years, been participating in M G and E's Green Power Tomorrow program, where we pay an extra cent per kilowatt hour for a a certain amount of of KWH. Uh and then we're credited with that renewable energy as part of our uh overall energy usage, and that that extra cent per kilowatt hour provides additional funding for M G and E to pursue further green projects. So as of twenty eighteen, this was uh what Slipstream calculated as our to- total renewable energy, just over four hundred and fifty-seven thousand kilowatt hours, about nine percent of our total gross electricity. Um when I looked at this, one thing I noticed was that this covers all of the solar that we have on campus, this covers the Green Power Tomorrow purchase, but a portion of M G and E's grid also is derived from renewable sources. Now, if M G and E is giving us electricity that is already a hundred percent from solar, there's nothing else we need to do, we are at a hundred percent renewable. Uh so I thought it was important to also in incorporate the the portion of M G and E's grid mix that is renewable as well. Um so when we throw in those numbers, uh I calculated another four hundred and forty-two thousand kilowatt hours that is just a part of M G and E's grid mix as of twenty eighteen. Uh the the number that I got from M G and E was nine point seven one percent of their grid was renewable. So when we count that as part of what we're purchasing from the utility, that gets us up closer to uh a a little bit under eighteen percent of our total electricity as of twenty eighteen uh was derived from renewable sources. Um and this is where, as a as a city for for all municipal operations, uh buildings and operations, including streetlights, the the water utility delivery, um we were purchasing about four and a half million, so using around five million total kilowatt hours per year as a city. Uh and and then adding in a little bit of electricity from Alliance as well. Uh updated this for twenty twenty because it's now been a while since Slipstream collected that data. Uh our total production didn't change much in twenty twenty, the only significant addition uh was the hundred and one point six kilowatt array that was installed on the East Fire Station roof, but that was uh didn't begin producing until late in the year, we only got a couple months of electricity from that. So still only around four hundred and forty thousand um kilowatt hours between our city uh solar panels and what we purchased from Green Power Tomorrow. M G and E, however, bumped up to almost fourteen percent renewables in their grid mix. So between what we're generating and what we're purchasing from M G and E, either through special programs or just as part of their grid, we're now over a million uh kilowatt hours of renewable electricity that we used last year, which put us over a fifth of our total electricity usage as a city, um which is a a a pretty significant milestone to pass. Um back in two thousand nine, uh Fitchburg signed on to uh then Governor Doyle's Energy Independent Communities pledge, so we agreed that by twenty twenty-five, we would source twenty-five percent of our energy uh from renewable sources. So we're on track to pass that this year, four years ahead of time, and start working on our on our next goal. Um my best estimate for this year, now something that of of course is a a large asterisk for our energy usage last year, is that occupancy use changed dramatically because of the pandemic, a lot of uh a lot of employees have been working from home. So their electricity usage for work is no longer counting towards the city's totals. Um the library has been close to the public for for quite a while. Uh so things like that have to be considered, that our our energy usage was a little bit lower last year than maybe it otherwise would have been. Um so for estimating future years, there's there's definitely some some fudge factor because we don't know exactly when we'll get back to full occupancy. Uh we're not sure what um you know, future um allowances for employees to work from home, things like that, how they'll be factored in. If we start having employees work from home regularly, it introduces the question of whether we need to start um uh considering their home usage part of city operations, and things get a little um a little bit tougher to calculate there, but but questions that that we'll be looking into, but certainly for for city buildings and operations. Um projecting a little bit of an increase this year, uh based on occupancy increasing a at some point as uh as the the county's COVID nineteen numbers start to improve, uh and looking at the addition of solar energy produced from this uh array at the O'Brien Farm. Uh my estimate is because the O'Brien Array is going to start producing until the middle of the year, this is about sixty percent of what M G and E is projecting will get in total from from our uh purchases from that grid. So by the end of this year, our twenty twenty-one numbers should be over thirty-three percent uh of our our total municipal electricity purchases that will be renewable. Uh if you were to take a snapshot at the end of the year, I believe will be around forty percent uh municipal electricity coming from renewables. Um so for twenty twenty-two, once we have a full year of electricity coming in from the O'Brien Array, I think we should be uh right around forty percent, maybe even a touch over, just depending on um uh depending on how those those questions of building occupancy and and overall usage, how those go. So right now, we're in a really good position, uh you know, thirty percent is a is a tremendous achievement for the city, getting close to forty percent is even better. Um of course, we're not satisfied, we want to keep pushing, but uh it's it's also nice to to take a moment and and um kind of appreciate what we have done so far and and use that as as motivation to keep pushing forward. Uh as as I I believe you're all aware, last year uh City Fitchburg was given four different recognitions by Dane County's Office of Energy and Climate Change as a as a county climate champion. Uh so three different buildings, the West and East Fire Station both, and the library were were recognized for their um for their performance in energy savings, and the city as a whole was was given the the second highest climate champion designation uh for its its water savings as well. So just a a lot of really good things uh going on in Fitchburg. Comparing to other communities, uh not necessarily as a um as a competitive point, but just sort of to try to benchmark where we're at and and looking at at other uh other communities in the county, the other six participants in this grant. Uh overall building energy consumption, Fitchburg is unsurprisingly among the highest. Uh Fitchburg is, I believe, the uh either largest or second largest by population city among these seven. Um and oh, sorry, this is just looking at those same numbers, but in a chart. Um I I believe also the number one city in terms of overall building square footage of the seven. Uh so having the hu- you know, one of the higher energy usages is not surprising. Uh so this is an interesting comparison as well, this E U I is energy usage intensity. So this is looking at uh uh this K B T U is thousand British thermal units, another uh way to measure energy, you can uh convert your your electricity and gas usage into a a single metric. So looking at at this thousand British thermal units per square foot, uh we can look at that energy usage intensity for for different building types. Um and we're, you know, the second highest here for City Hall, our library is right in the middle. The the streetlights and the community center are actually pretty uh doing pretty well compared to our our neighboring communities, so different levels of performance depending on which aspect of the city's energy usage you look at. Um benchmarking then against more national standards, so these are, these are benchmarks from ASHRI is the um American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. Uh so they set a number of uh um requirements and standards and and recommendations for uh various building operation considerations or uh nationwide. And if we look at these two numbers here, the blue bars are Fitchburg's actual energy usage intensity for each of these buildings. Uh the twenty eighteen benchmark is the average energy usage for this building type, based on ASHRI's um ASHRI's data collection and analysis. Uh the target is what they're setting as a goal for an efficient building of that type. Um and you can see again, where we kind of have a mix, we've got some, the the police processing unit, one of the strengths here is that this is part of City Hall. Uh a a number of the other uh types here, so these are imperfect comparisons, a lot of the the benchmark numbers they have are for uh standalone police buildings, so this is kind of n- not a perfect comparison. Uh the new fire station is performing admirably. Uh the Firehouse and uh the the Lacy Road Safety Building and Firehouse looks like it's a little bit high compared to these benchmarks and targets, but even in the last two years, uh the the energy usage of this building has dropped uh pretty remarkably. Um it, from twenty eighteen to nineteen, overall kilowatt hour use decreased by twenty percent. And then in twenty twenty, a combination of further efficiency measures and, again, occupancy and and overall usage decrease, it drops another thirty-eight percent. Um so last year's energy usage was around sixty K B T U per square foot. Um around half of of what we were seeing. Uh or sorry, the 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 total energy usage intensity, that's the kilowatt hours were about half of twenty eighteen. Thermes last year were also, our natural gas usage was about one-third lower last year than we saw in twenty eighteen. Um City Hall total energy usage decreased by five percent from twenty eighteen to nineteen, another sixteen percent last year, and again, some of that's an artifact of lower occupancy. Uh but eve- even our buildings that are above the the ASHRI levels have been decreasing, so we're we're continuing continuing to make progress, we had a a twenty twelve thirteen uh retro commissioning study, so uh um some some contractors came in and and looked at a number of our building performance metrics and equipment that we're using and made recommendations for areas that we could make efficiency upgrades to to save energy and do so in a way that was cost effective. Um with the uh splitting off of the uh the computer room for FACTV, uh I'm blanking now because the uh pandemic has uh time is not making a lot of sense to me anymore. I remember if it was last year or this year that that we uh blocked that off and kind of separated it from the overall HVAC load of the rest of City Hall. Um but that was the final recommendation that that we had prioritized from that retro commissioning report. Uh so we've made a lot of progress on that as well, and we're continuing to see that payoff in terms of lower overall energy usage and thus um lower energy costs for the city as well. Um when we're looking at some of the upgrades that Slipstream recommended for energy savings, there are a number of factors to consider. Of course, we want carbon reduction to decrease in in terms of, you know, for my role as the sustainability specialist, that's one of the primary things I'm looking at. Um but we also have to consider things like maintenance costs, and is is this something that we're capable of doing the maintenance in in-house? Uh how does this, uh how does this work for occupant comfort, health, and safety? This is something that uh that you may recall from a couple summers ago, we realized that our natural gas usage was increasing uh in the summer, which you don't normally see because we use that for heating. And what was happening was uh our buildings were being cooled so well that that some occupants were actually complaining about the low temperatures, and we were seeing summer boiler usage. Uh so we had to make some adjustments to to try to account for that and make sure that occupant uh comfort was was still prioritized, and we got that that summer boiler usage back down. Um but then, you know, adding in, you know, what's the primary cost, can the city afford that right now? Uh or find grants or other funding, and and what's the overall long-term energy savings potential? So there are a number of different considerations that that we want to make sure we're looking into when we're uh when we're looking at potential energy efficiency upgrades and and making our list of priorities. Um Slipstream found across all the communities that that consistently lighting uh needed to be upgraded to LED uh in varying percentages from one community to the next, but everyone had improvements to make on LED lighting, occupancy and daylighting controls. Um several HVAC improvements that that were, again, common across cities, uh and looking at at uh plug load considerations and and weather uh weather equipment that was that was being plugged in and drawing energy was being uh operated as efficiently as possible and not not drawing excess energy when it wasn't being used, things like that. Um some of the s- the recommendations for City Hall and some of these have already gotten some some uh improvements uh since the initial report. Uh data was collected and the building walkthroughs were conducted, so a lot of lighting improvements were recommended. Um also, the this A V data server into a smaller room with a dedicated split system, that's what I referenced, that was the final step from our retro commissioning studies, there are some things we've already accomplished here. Um that small summer boiler to improve ther- improve thermal comfort is is what I referenced, that that uh kind of occupant comfort issue and how to make sure that we're we're handling that effectively. Um for the community and and senior center, there were fewer recommendations, I I didn't point out, but uh uh on the previous slide, when uh looking at the comparisons to those ASHRI benchmarks, the community center is actually performing really strongly. So there were fewer recommendations made here. Um primarily controls and sensors and ensuring that that energy isn't being used in unoccupied built, uh unoccupied rooms or at at lower occupancy and usage times. Um with uh we also got some some recommendations from With, we also got some some recommendations from Slipstream about what we could potentially save if we were to pursue a number of these measures. So for City Hall, they calculated a total bill of around thirty thousand dollars, but an annual cost savings of just under fourteen thousand. And so if you, if if we were to able to pursue everything they recommended, we'd see that savings pay off the initial investment in just over two years. This is something that's that's pretty common to energy efficiency recommendations that that contractors will make is they there's, there's a lot of things you could do to improve a building's envelope, to improve the efficiency. But if it's not going to pay itself back, if it's not something that is if it's not something that's economically feasible, it's it's not going to make the list. And so a lot of these tend to have a really strong payback time, similar for the community center here. With their recommendation, saving over five thousand dollars a year, we'd pay back the initial fourteen thousand dollar investment in less than three years. And again, some things that that Kevin Richmond has already been looking into, some some things he's already accomplished. So that's kind of the kind of a high level summary of of recommendations. But again, these are based on data and walkthroughs from twenty eighteen, so there's a little bit of a disconnect with where where we are today. Slipstream also wasn't able to walk through every building, and so for for buildings that they couldn't do a site visit, they essentially looked at the overall energy usage, they looked at the square footage, and they they assigned them to certain building types and tried to make recommendations based on what do we typically see in buildings of this type? And what do we recommend you look into in those buildings? If if those improvements are applicable, again, here's the savings you could see. So a a number of things in our other buildings as well that were a little bit less specific necessarily to the city of Pittsburgh, but but things that have been passed along to at the very least to Kevin to to look at and to just continue some some ongoing discussions and make sure that we're identifying energy-saving opportunities everywhere we can. The the bar graph here that we got from Slipstream then was essentially looking at if you were to implement everything we've recommended, what would be your overall decrease in energy usage intensity? And every building stood to see different levels of savings, City Hall and and the community center, the were the largest by by percentage. With, I I believe the estimate was that we could save somewhere around ten percent of our total for between five and ten percent of our total building energy costs through pursuing these. They looked at the fleet as well, and this is something that I've also had several discussions with our our various fleet managers. And Slipstream broke the vehicles down into different types based on the fuel usage and whether it's a light, medium or heavy duty vehicle, estimating the city's overall carbon emissions and and looking at our energy, energy usage and costs to see where there were potential savings. Breaking these down into various categories and every city kind of has a different different ability to address these. So so police vehicles and the light duty vehicles are are probably going to be the ones that offer the the best opportunities for Pittsburgh in terms of savings, because these are vehicles where you can sorry, I'll stay here instead of going to the chart right away. The lighter duty vehicles are where you tend to be able to get opportunities for hybrid and electrics right now. There aren't, you know, our F three fifties that that we use, those don't have hybrid or electric replacement options. They're not about to hit the market, it's similar with with all of our heavy duty vehicles, the emergency vehicles, plows and things like that. There are some some potential other other places where we can can get cleaner burning energy or or cleaner derived energy for the heavier vehicles. But each one kind of has a little bit of a hurdle that we'd have to overcome, so that's something that I'm looking into with the fleet managers. But but certainly, the the low hanging fruit is going to be our our smaller vehicles and getting to a point where the hybrid and electric options are are going to offer the performance that we need while also delivering the the energy savings we're looking for. So in in total, if we pursued everything that Slipstream recommended, again, a pretty significant amount of of cost savings to the city as well as a reduction in overall CO2 emissions. But again, based on which which department and what type of vehicles we're talking about that, some of them are definitely more short term versus versus others being a a bit farther out in the future. This is all the, I should have mentioned this upfront, if if you haven't seen it on the city's web, city's website already, this full report from Slipstream, there is a a full basic report section, a Pittsburgh-specific chapter, and then and then some appendices. That whole thing is available on the city's website as well, so if there's anything that that you want to look back further, you know, certainly feel free to ask me, but it it's also available for for review on our our website. This is again something we're looking at at our patrol vehicles, if we're able to convert those to hybrid. It's a really short payback period. Right now, I've I've spoken with Chief Brecklin about this, it's definitely something he's excited to get into, and I think looking at 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 the next generation of of hybrid patrol vehicles, looks like it's going to be a a lot more promising in terms of of overall performance. So we're hoping we'll be able to get into the hybrid game soon with with some of our our fleet vehicles. Skip ahead to to some of the the street lighting here. This is one that is a little bit complex, simply because we have some streetlights that that we fully own and operate. There are some that Madison Gas and Electric does as well, and and a few that are on Alliant meters. So depending on who's actually controlling these, that's going to determine whether we have any ability to control them being converted to LEDs. So if it's an MGNE or an Alliant light, we can request that they they convert them from HPS or metal halide to an LED. But but we can't necessarily control that ourselves. But we did still get recommendations on upgrading our our streetlights to LEDs. It's a a much costlier option. But but certainly costs are coming down and still we're, you know, we're seeing payback periods that are not as strong as some of the building lighting and HVAC improvements. But but still certainly some significant cost savings and and something that will will definitely pay itself off well within the lifespan of the bulb. But then again, just just looking to make sure that 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 we have the budget available to make these improvements. And then considering, you know, are are we replacing equipment, are we replacing lighting at the end of its life when it needs to be replaced anyway? And so we're we're essentially looking at a full lifespan of an LED versus a brand new less efficient piece of equipment, or are you replacing something before it was scheduled to be? And so you're you're now the concern with that being that you still had some useful life left in the existing equipment, and so there's that that waste consideration as well. But still pretty, pretty solid payback periods on these bulbs, if not quite as strong. And again, a an area where if we can convert to all LEDs, there's there's cost savings available there as well. The final bit, this one, I I think I have all the slides in here, and I'm not really going to dwell on any of the individual slides. Slipstream looked at some of our properties to see where we still had potential to install solar. And I've spoken with some city staff and the the sites that were identified, a couple of them were were not as as viable as we thought. I'm still still trying to speak with a couple of staff about some potential city land for solar, but the 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 recommendations here, there definitely are. There are still areas where we could install further. And and it's definitely something I want to look into, but would probably take further grant funding, similar to what we had with our twenty seventeen municipal solar project. But with with the caveat that a lot of our rooftop potential has been pretty well tapped between City Hall, two fire stations, the library, any rooftops that we haven't put solar on at this point are, I believe, for the most part, at at they weren't designed for the they weren't designed to structurally hold solar panels, and so that would take some shoring up. But, you know, potentially a a significant amount of of annual savings as well if we were to install further solar. We have, you know, several building rooftops available, we have some some pump stations that that potentially could have, excuse me, could have some ground mounted solar on their properties as well. But that's going to take further further internal analysis to see if that's how many of those are viable for the city. The last thing that Slipstream looked at, and this was less any individual investigation for the seven communities, and it was more just at a high level recommending, here are things that that we can consider on a policy front that would help to reduce both municipal energy usage and also community energy usage. So things like creating benchmarking policies, so if we're going to construct a new building in the city, are we benchmarking it against similar building types and mandating that it be you know, a certain percent more efficient than an average building, a certain, you know, should it be within within a range compared to energy efficient building standards? Do we have policies to to make sure that we're that we're operating buildings efficiently? Do we have green purchasing policies? You know, a number of things like this, and some of these are areas where where Pittsburgh already is is achieving what Slipstream has recommended. So, you know, has the municipality identified a staff lead to ensure policy moves forward? And that's something that that Pittsburgh did several years ago with with the RCC, especially pushing a a full-time sustainability position. You know, do we track our energy data? Certainly, that's something that that we've been doing and we're we're continuing to work on on both tracking and reporting that energy usage better and more more quickly as as the energy is actually being used, try to get a a more real time reporting. A few different policies that were recommended on the operational side and then some on the purchasing side as well. With operational, there are several things in here, looking at things like thermostat set points and occupancy controls or or training occupants to turn off lights when they're not in use. There are various things like that that could be considered in terms of of developing policies for municipal building operation. And then also for equipment that we might purchase that that I I think this is one where Pittsburgh doesn't really have much in the way of policies to guide efficiency. I think we've consistently followed pretty good practice. But there's not necessarily policies in place that we can point to. So that's certainly something that that could be looked at. And I've been focused more on the energy reporting side and and a few other things. I haven't gotten into looking at policy myself yet, but but it's certainly something I want to consider. And then new construction design guidelines, and this is something that this report was focused more on municipal energy usage. But certainly, as we consider expanding that also into community energy usage, the the twenty nineteen Clean Energy Resolution set some some targets as well for the municipality to try and help the 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 broader Pittsburgh community in becoming more energy efficient. And so there are things that we could consider on a on a on the policy side that that could impact new building construction in the broader community that that would help to get the both residential and commercial sectors of of Pittsburgh to a a better place as well in terms of energy efficiency. So just kind of given an overview of the 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 broad suite of recommendations that we received from Pittsburgh. They gave us their their estimate, if we were able to implement everything that they've recommended, we could get seventeen, eighteen percent savings, depending on whether you're talking about energy usage or cost savings. But a a a lot of we've, we've made a lot of good headway in the last few years, and there's definitely still significant untapped potential to to keep pushing forward too. That's the last slide of the presentation. So I don't know if if any of you have any
Thank you, Phil. Yeah, so if anyone has question, raise your hands or put it in the chat. Any question? Oh, one second. Gabriela has a question. Gabriela, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much, Phil. This was fantastic because they had all laid out, really appreciate all your work on this. I'm happy that we have you to be tracking all this data. My question in result revolves around some of the, some something you showed super early on about the wells, pumps and lifts being such a significant part of our energy usage.
Yes.
I guess I don't have enough familiarity with those types of facilities to understand if we can improve that at all, but do you have a sense of what we can do to maybe reduce the amount of energy usage or or improve that in a sustainability way?
So to be honest, that's probably of of our whole energy portfolio, that is the it's the area that I'm the least familiar with. I I definitely am am look, starting to look into it a bit more with things like you can get variable speed motors that that will use less energy. I think there are several several stations where we already have done so. I think it's it's just a it's a significant energy user, and there's, there's not really an easy way around that, that that pump stations like that just, they use a lot of energy to pull that that water up out of the ground and deliver it. And it's just, it's, it's something that I think just has to be taken into consideration. We're looking at how to when we're looking at what we need to do to to some word that's that's not coming to me, but when we're looking at how to to counter the the energy that we're using with renewable energy, I think that's one where there's maybe a lower percentage opportunity in terms of efficiency right now, given what's out there. And it 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 might just require a little bit more in terms of renewable renewable procurement. Certainly, with with all of these, the the preference is always going to be energy efficiency, you know, the the so I I worked in energy efficiency for a few years before coming here, and a common mantra you'd hear is the cheapest kilowatt hour is the one you don't use. So it's the same way with energy efficiency with renewables. The cleanest kilowatt hour, the cleanest energy is the energy that you never had to use to begin with. So if we could accomplish everything through design and through efficiency, that would be the way to go. And then, you know, you're you're really cutting down on on the new solar wind you have to generate. This is something that we're seeing with with the Oregon School District, that Forest Edge Elementary is net zero down the road, certainly that required investment upfront with with their solar panels and 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 some of their other technologies. But down the road, it really pays itself off when you're not looking at ten years later, how do we how do we mitigate some of our carbon emissions, because there should be none? Certainly with with wells, that's not going to be the case, and so there's only so far I think you can get with efficiency, and we'll be looking more at at kind of kind of mitigating, kind of balancing it out with renewables.
Any other question? Gabriela.
You might not know the answer to this, but I'm just curious. I I feel like, you know, we talk about hybrid electric vehicles. Hybrids are like, obviously, there's new hybrid models for police cars that are coming out and are becoming more common. Do you have a sense of if electric vehicles are going to progress enough over the next ten years? That it's going to be a true option for the type of municipal vehicle uses? Or do you think we're like looking more of like a hybrid future for our fleet?
I think we have certainly hybrid is going to be very viable. I I think that's pretty safe to say, we're we're getting to a point where not not just SUVs, but pickups are getting hybrid options as well. With with Tesla really pushing things on the electric side, I think that's been, that's been driving a number of other manufacturers to try to get in the game as well, and that's, that's been an an overall benefit for the EV market. I think one, one difficulty with getting our fleet to electric is that that we don't really have a lot of sedans, and that's where EVs have made the strongest inroads so far, just because you you've got a a smaller payload, you have, you, you know, have a lighter vehicle that you need to to move. Without as many sedans, looking at SUVs and pickups and heavy duty, you know, there, there are definitely electric vehicles out there. At this point, not really viable, I think, within five, six years, I'm expecting to see a number of electric SUVs at a at a bare minimum, if not, if not hopefully some some medium duty pickups as well. I I don't know when you get into the larger, the heavy duty vehicles, you know, what Madison is I, I don't know when you get into the larger, the heavy duty vehicles, you know, what Madison is doing with their, with their heavy duty vehicles is they're looking at things like renewable natural gas that they're deriving from the Dane County landfills. They're looking at biodiesel and these are things that you know, there's, we, we, we could get, we could get renewable natural gas from QuickTrip. The closest QuickTrip to our maintenance building, to our public works garage is like eight miles away. So our option is either every time we need to refuel a vehicle, we're adding 16 miles of driving on just to, to get the tank full. Or we have to retrofit our only garage into one that, that we have tanks of renewable natural gas there. And so either one is kind of a, a tough option. Once you start getting into, into heavy duty vehicles. It's, it's definitely going to be a it'll be tricky. We'll say that. I I think that I, I guess the, the short answer to your question is at least with, with the light and the medium duty vehicles. I think that electric a decade from now, we will see options available for everything that we've got. The question is, does it meet our performance needs and does it fit within our budget? Certainly getting the getting additional money in the budget that is dedicated to helping with the purchase of efficient vehicles. That's going to be, you know, that'll be a tremendous help. It won't allow for a full scale turnover in three years, but it, you know, every little bit is going to make a big difference. And, you know, I, I, I think this is one of those things, both in terms of an individual municipality upgrading its fleet. But then in terms of the overall marketplace shifting, that, that the, kind of the, the critical mass point where, where you really start to develop a lot of momentum and, and go from a tiny percentage to a huge majority. I, I think that's a lot, I think that happens a lot sooner than, than we tend to realize. That, you know, you don't have to get to forty, fifty percent of things shifting over to electric before you feel like you're really making progress. You know, you make your first couple purchases, you say, wow, that was, that was huge, that was, that took us a, a, a long time, but we're really proud of it. You know, you get five, 10% more and all of a sudden, you know, you, you feel a lot of momentum. And I'm, I'm hoping the same thing occurs for us.
Thank you, Phil. Any other questions? No?
If you think of any, I'm definitely always available and
Okay.
And again, the, the, the report is, is online on the, the Green Pittsburgh website. So I definitely encourage you to go check that out.
Okay. Can you also make public about the newsletter and how people can, can, you know, can register online to, to get the newsletter?
Yes, let me, here we go. So here's well, as long as I have the screen shared here. So here's the screen, Pittsburgh. And then the OEI Energy Report is where you would find the, the different sections of, of what I just shared. In much, much greater detail, what they wrote has, has a lot of, of, of great narrative and, and context. So once every month or two, I try to put together a, a Green E-newsletter and send it out to a list of subscribers and you can sign up for that mailing list through, and for some reason I always trouble, here we go. So the notify me down here by the envelope icon on the main, the main Pittsburgh website. If you go into notify me and scroll down to Green Pittsburgh, you can either subscribe through emails or you can get text alerts that will include a, a link that you can access on your, on your phone's browser. But yeah, once every month or two, I'll send out a, a newsletter with various environmental, maybe any observances going on, significant events that month, if there are, if there are events being held either in Pittsburgh or the, or the broader community. Just kind of a, a variety of, of sustainability related topics.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, so next, our next presentation is Sub-Zero Stormwater Study. Claudia Guy and we have also some consultant from Strand Associates. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Claudia, you are gonna start with the presentation?
Okay, perfect. All right. So thank you everyone for, for giving us your time tonight to share our findings from the Sub-Zero and Stoner Prairie Area Watershed Study. My name is Claudia Guy. I'm the Environmental Engineer for the City of Pittsburgh. And I'm joined today by Mike Williams, who's a project engineer with Strand. So, so today we're going to start by giving some background on the, the project. We're going to talk about the watershed within the study area. We'll briefly describe the hydrology and hydraulics that were part of the analysis. We'll talk about the alternatives that we looked at to, to mitigate the flooding potential in this area. We'll review the, the recommended alternative and we'll finish with next steps and open it up for questions. So just starting with a little bit of background information. The goal of this project was to develop alternatives to reduce the flooding potential within the Stoner Prairie Stormwater Study area. So on the right hand side there, you can see that the study area, the area of interest is shown in that green, green outlined area, which is kind of centered along the race, Lacy Road and Seminole Highway intersection there. And then just for some additional reference, the TID nine proposed parcels, or I guess the two nine parcels, not proposed anymore, are shown in pink there. To the north of Lacy Road, to the north of that Seminole Highway and Lacy Road intersection, there's that kettle, which in more recent years looks more like a lake. Historically, you'll see, it, it hasn't been like that in the past, but due to the heavy rainfall we've seen in more recent years, there's a lake there. So I wanted to start with, with how, how the method for mitigating flood potential is different in this area from how we typically mitigate flood potential. So, so the typical strategy is to allow safely passing storm events in excess of the 100 year storm event without impacting any buildings. The way that that's typically done is by providing free board between buildings and the overland flow elevation. So you can see in this image that there's a part of the landscape where water would pool, where it would pond. And then it would go over that hump on the right hand side and then continue downstream to the right hand side. And you can see that the house in this image has been placed one foot higher than, than where that hump is located. And so, so that's what we're really talking about with free board. One foot free, free board is really the minimum recommended free board for protecting structures. And of course, the underlying assumption for this method is that there is a viable overland flow route to protect your structures. So, so why can't we do that here? The short answer is because there isn't a viable overland flow route in this area due to kettle hydrology, which I'm sure everyone here is very familiar with at this point. So I'll go over this quickly. A kettle is a low lying area in the landscape that does not have a natural surface water outlet. So during normal precipitation years, water doesn't leave the kettles by flowing out of the kettle. It only exits the kettle by infiltrating into the ground, evaporating or evaporate transpirating through the vegetation. And during very, very wet years, water levels may even get high enough that it finds an overland flow route out of the kettle. So, so the overland flow ra- route in this case, if we just allowed water to fill up this kettle north of Sub-Zero Parkway and just allowed that to, the water level to continue rising. And then if we potentially saw very extreme rainfall, then the natural overflow route would involve flooding parts of the Sub-Zero Parkway and then, and Lacy Road as well. And then it would kettle hop agricultural land for five plus miles to the south prior to entering a navigable waterway. So that image on the bottom left hand side is, you know, just showing obviously what it looks like when water flows over a a road and potential road closures that could occur. And then in the upper right hand side, that's showing what kettle hopping could look like. Basically what happens is water fills in natural low areas in the landscape. And then it kind of spreads out and then meanders across the landscape without really having a defined path, because there's no natural channel in that area. And that's pretty typical of kettle hydrology and the south part of Pittsburgh has a lot of that. So that's what it would look like for five, you know, if it didn't get infiltrated along the way, that's what it would look like for five plus miles before it actually reached a stream. So how are we planning to mitigate flood potential in this area? For that, going back to the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, which was published in 2013 and then amended in 2017. The plan here was to establish a flood protection elevation, which was set at 1022.6 for the closed depression west of Badger State Trail. Based on the predicted water surface from back to back 100 year runoff events. This extreme weather scenario was recommended for flood protection because there's no surface water outlet for this watershed. And then the second piece was to develop an emergency pumping plan and install infrastructure to mitigate the flooding. So that's something that we looked at as part of this study. And then the third, the third piece was to require stormwater runoff volume control practices within the watershed. And that's something that we require as part of our ordinance currently. We require 90% of the pre-development infiltration to be infiltrated in post-development. We're not able to go above that because state, state laws limit the amount that we can require. So, so that's not really something that we're able to require the developers to do above what we already require in the ordinance. But that's something that we looked at doing. We looked at the city doing that as part of this study. So, so this is just a diagram showing what that flood protection zone would look like. So, so there's a low area in the landscape, which is that area that looks like a lake currently north of Lacy Road. And then we established what area in that low lying area would be able to hold the volume from back to back 100 year storm events. And we said, okay, anything outside of this area is pretty well protected because if we see back to back 100 year storm events, we would expect it to be in this flood protection zone. But of course, the underlying assumption of this method is that the kettle is dry prior to those storm events occurring, because if there's water in the area that's the flood protection zone, it's not actually providing any flood protection because it doesn't have space for more water to come in. So the kettle that we've been talking about so far is, is labeled as CD Closed Depression one in this image here. And another area that we looked at as part of this study is CD five, which is to the south of Lacy Road. We looked at that area as well because there is development going on there with Edgewood and the solar farm. All right. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike to go over the study results.
Thank you, Claudia. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you about this project. And with that, well, I'll get started talking about the watershed description. So the watershed areas, what I show you on the screen here in the picture to the right is two watershed areas. The area in the green is the Sub-Zero Kettle Watershed. And that has a watershed area of about 220 acres. And then the area in yellow is the kettle south of Lacy Road watershed area. And that has an area of about 349 acres. And I know Claudia just showed you kind of where these kettles are, but I thought I'd show the footprints again on this. These are the footprints of each of the kettles. So they're pretty large areas. Looking at the historical aerial imagery, it does look like these kettles are, are more wet than dried. Looking at 1937, you can definitely see that the soils in this area are darker. And then coming forward to 2014, there's definitely water sitting in this area. Looking into 2017, you can see a big change to what this kettle looks like, and I'll talk about that later. And then moving to 2020, you can see on the fringes, this little bit of white is gone. And so from that, it's obviously filled up even more. In the past, we, we know that the previous owner actually pumped water from the kettle areas that he could turn it into viable farmland. So this isn't, I guess, a surprise for us. Talking about going from 2014 to 2017, there was a wet landscape scrape project that was completed in 2016. Talk about that next. So as part of the Sub-Zero Parkway Construction Project, they filled in about 14 acre feet of storage volume, just building up the road along the north side of the kettle, and they needed a way to get that back. And so what the engineers came up with was lowering the bottom of the kettle about three feet. And you could see it in the cross section view here with the purple line being the proposed. But they lowered the bottom of the kettle about three feet and everything drains to the middle of the kettle. And just so everybody understands, this area is a wetland by DNR standards. But this was all approved by WDNR in 2016 to get, to get this to work. Claudia talked about the overland flow routes. They're so important. Looking at the Sub-Zero kettle, there's a few ridges that the water has to go over before it can make its way out of the system. The first is an overtopping area within the farm field just southeast of the Sub-Zero kettle. And that's 1023.8. And then the water has to stage up a little bit higher to get over the Badger Bike Path at 1024 and a half. And makes its way across Lacy Road down to the kettle to the south. Looking at the kettle to the south, overtopping elevations, there's two driveways along the southern edge here that have overtopping elevations of 1021 and a half. And the reason why I'm showing you these is these are so important to, to be protected. They really provide system resiliency. Let's say you get a thousand year event, you know, where is that water going to go? How is it going to make its way to the next point safely? And that's what these overland flow routes are doing today. So as part of the project, we went out and got seven soil borings to understand the, the ground in the area. And then as part of doing the borings, they were able to install four monitoring wells and one posometer well. As part of the soils investigation, the soils consultant actually told us that there's two aquifers. In this general area, there's an upper and a lower aquifer present. I'm going to talk about the layers, but I'll explain where those aquifers kind of sit in between each layer. So these are on average, there's about 10 inches of topsoil and then two and a half feet of clay under the topsoil. And then there's that first zone of sand that's about 14 feet deep beyond that clay layer. That's that upper aquifer. After that point, we have five feet of clay and then it's sand again for an extended period below that. And that's the lower aquifer. So in the summer of 2020, the elevation of the Sub-Zero kettle was up to about elevation 1020. And it was decided that we really needed to do something to get. was up to about elevation ten twenty, and it was decided that we really needed to do something to get this water down so that if we did get a large storm event, we would, uh, try to mitigate that flooding that could occur. So the city purchased a mobile pump station, and that's shown in the picture to the, well, I guess it's in the middle of the slide. And then looking straight down from there, you can see the pump laydown area running along the Badger State Trail. This pump can pump about eight hundred and fifty to a thousand gallons per minute. And in the month of September, they had it running for about three hundred and sixty hours. In October, the first of October, they shut it off. And they were able to lower the water surface elevation in the kettle by about two and a half feet over that month period. And they removed about eighteen and a half million gallons of water, uh, during that month. Just so you have an understanding of where this water is going, the red piping here is that, uh, laydown pipe that the city had temporarily laid out. And this directs the water to the Business Park A Pond. And then it follows the existing city infrastructure down to the Seminole Village Pond, and then the existing ditch is down to Dunn's Marsh. So as part of, uh, getting the wells, uh, installed and also doing the pumping, we decided that it'd be a good idea to start taking some measurements of both the Subzero Kettle, uh, water elevation and the groundwater elevations in each of these wells. And I understand this table is small. I'm not expecting you to read it, but what I wanted to show you is that city staff actually did collect quite a bit of data during that one-month period. And we were able to, uh, to come up with a, a couple of observations from that. And the, the first observation is just based off of the high water elevation of the kettle versus the groundwater elevations are about four to five feet different. We've decided that we weren't pumping groundwater when we were pumping in the summer. We were just pumping the water that was really just sitting inside of the kettle. The second thing was, um, by pumping out the Subzero Kettle, it also lowered the groundwater around the kettle by about, on average, about a foot to a foot and a half. And in general, the, the gradient of that groundwater flow is to the south and the southeast. So moving on, I'm going to talk about hydrology and hydraulics. So hydrologic parameters, I got four maps on the screen here. Uh, the first map on the top left is the watershed maps. We use the, um, Dane County LiDAR data to be able to delineate the watersheds, uh, for each kettle area, and that's the first map. We use the NRCS soils mapping. And then we also created current and ultimate condition land use files. And with these, uh, all four of these things together, we were able to create runoff curve numbers. And that helps us convert rainfall into stormwater runoff, which is what ultimately is draining down to each of these kettles. For the hydraulic modeling, we use program called XP Swim. And in, within that modeling, we use the city storm sewer system. We were able to get cross culverts in there, the overland flow routes that I had discussed. And then based off of the, that LiDAR data that, that I told you about, we're also able to generate storage volumes within each kettle and also other low-lying areas and tension basins, uh, within the system. And with that model, we ran several twenty-four-hour design storms, including the one, two, ten, hundred, and also the back-to-back hundred-year events. So I wanted to talk about the Subzero Kettle modeling results, but before I do, I want to just quickly go over some of the important elevations that we were looking at as we were doing this modeling. First of all, I already told you about the overtopping elevation across Badger State Trail. The bottom of the kettle, when it's dry, is elevation ten fifteen. That's actually right here in the middle. Uh, Subzero Parkway Low Point, so there's a low point in this general area, and that elevation is ten twenty-three point seven. And we also looked at all of the adjacent structures, uh, surrounding this area today, including Promega and Subzero, the Hop House Development. And what we found was that the lowest first floor was ten twenty-eight and a half, uh, which is about four feet, which gives us about four feet of freeboard when you start looking at, uh, the high water elevations that were generated by the modeling. One other thing that we did with the model is we wanted to understand, uh, how full can the pond or the kettle be at the start of the design storm? And still have it be able to, uh, contain that hundred-year back-to-back volume. So what we did is we, we modeled it with, uh, no water in it. Then we added a foot of water to it and then ran the hundred-year back-to-back storm again, and then did that with two and the three feet. And what you can see along the bottom here is kind of how that water elevation changes depending on, uh, the starting elevation of the water in there. What we determined, looking at the current and ultimate conditions, is we want to have between zero and one feet of water within that kettle before the start of the hundred, hundred-year back-to-back event. And that'll provide us enough leftover volume to, to contain that and not get up to the elevation to where it's going to start to flood out the Subzero Parkway Low Point. Uh, looking at the kettle south of Lacy Road, again, I already told you about the overtopping elevations to the south. We did notice that there are some, uh, I think it's gas, gas utility pads located just south of Lacy Road. And those are at about elevation ten twenty-three based off the LiDAR data. So we had both of these elevations in mind when we started looking at high water elevations from various events. And just highlighting the hundred-year and hundred-year back-to-back, you can see that under current conditions, it's getting up to ten twenty-two point seven, and under ultimate, it gets up to ten twenty-two seventy-one. Both of these are very close to that utility pit elevation. And it just stresses the importance of keeping this ten twenty-one and a half overtopping elevation in place, uh, in the future. Moving forward with alternatives analysis, uh, we're going to be looking at six different alternatives tonight. The first two are going to deal with infiltration. The second, or the next three are going to talk about drainage to the Dunn's Marsh area, and then the final one is going to talk about draining that kettle to the south. So starting with, uh, the first infiltration alternative, that's infiltration within the footprint of the Subzero Kettle. Uh, we chose the west side of the kettle as the, the place to install this infiltration basin area. That's mostly because most of the water coming into the kettle actually is coming from the west side. And you can see with the blue pipes there, these are the points of entry into the kettle. So our hope is we can intercept the water as it's coming in and try to get it to infiltrate down. Uh, looking down at, um, the cross-section, this would be like a cross-section just through the middle of the infiltration basin here. We're proposing to take out about two and a half to three feet of material that's in the bottom of the kettle, that's kind of mucky and clay material that doesn't allow water to infiltrate. And we're proposing to replace that material with sand. And then on top of that sand, we would mix in about four inches of compost and till that into the top layer, and, and that creates an engineered soil. And we'd be doing that for filtration purposes, uh, to protect the groundwater. This option also incorporates a separation berm that separates the water, uh, as it comes into the infiltration area. Uh, and it just doesn't bypass the infiltration area and make its way down to the rest of the kettle. Another aspect of this, you can see along the green line here, I'm calling this a, a level spreader device. And a detail of that is shown in the top right. That consists of a six-inch PVC encased with clear stone. And the hope is, is that as the water comes into the infiltration basin, it'll fill, uh, start to fill up and travel along this level spreader. And at a point, start to spill out, and it evenly spreads the stormwater runoff across the entire bottom of the infiltration basin. And it just makes it work more, it's, it's more effective by doing that. Some of the observations, uh, that we saw while putting this together was, first of all, the area with inside the infiltration basin can hold about a one-year design storm. However, the infiltration capacity is approximately a three-month design storm, so it's pretty small. And the big reason for that is the ground, the proximity to the groundwater. So at the end of pumping, we showed elevations of around ten fifteen for the groundwater elevation, and the bottom of the infiltration basin is ten seventeen. So only have two feet there. And what happens is, it's called groundwater mounting, but as you introduce water into an infiltration basin, you get a mound that occurs on top of the, uh, groundwater table. And it, it's almost like an upside-down bowl, if you can envision it. And as the bottom of that bowl starts to come up and intersect the bottom of your infiltration basin, the capacity of the infiltration is significantly reduced. And that's what we want to try to avoid. Unfortunately, that proximity is too close in this situation. And so during wet years, this option may not work as well. The other thing we noticed about this pond is the top of that separation berm is ten nineteen. However, we still have a ten fifteen elevation in the middle. We need a way to drain out the middle of this kettle. There's still going to be water that falls on the kettle. And there's some water that comes from the north. So other options are going to need to be included as part of this option to be able to continue to drain down the middle of that kettle. Moving on with the next infiltration option, this is the infiltration basin located outside of the Subzero Kettle area. And I just wanted to talk about why I chose this area. It looks a little random. I can understand that. Few things going just to the north of this basin, you can see several more contours up in that area. So if we moved the infiltration basin up into this area, there'd be a lot more cut involved to be able to construct the detention basin. Secondly, we talked about the importance of overland flow routes. I didn't want to stick the infiltration basin right in the middle of the overland flow route and had, expect to have the water drain through that before it can spill over the Badger State Trail. This, there's no other magic rhyme or reason to where this is. Obviously, we would talk to the, the developer as we start to move forward if this is the preferred alternative. We would talk to the developer, uh, about their preferred location. We understand that this is highly developable land. And, uh, we're, we're flexible from that standpoint. So for this option, we show a cross-section on the right here. We're proposing to take out about three feet of clay material and then backfill again with that sand and compost mix to create an engineered uh, soil on top. We're also proposing to use the level spreader device that I had just talked about before. One thing about this option is we're trying to get the water from about elevation ten fifteen, the bottom of the kettle, up to the infiltration basin, which has an elevation of, uh, ten twenty. So we're having to pump that water up five feet. So this option does require the use of a pumping station. And it's also going to require, uh, the installation of a force main, about nine hundred feet of an eight-inch force main. Observations that we saw, uh, when going through the calculations for, for this alternative, I just talked to you about the groundwater mounting. We did sort of an iterative process with the amount of flow that we're able to pump into the basin and how long it would take for the groundwater mounting to come up to a point where it would start to intersect that bottom of the infiltration basin. And what we determined was it was about twelve hours. So it sounded like a, a good number for us. During a normal day, you could pump for twelve hours and then stop pumping for the final twelve hours, and you would let that groundwater recede back to normal. And then the next day, you could start it up all over again. So looking at pumping for twelve hours a day, uh, and the amount of store, or the amount of water we're talking about, uh, under current conditions in a hundred-year storm event, it's going to take about thirty-seven days to pump the kettle up into the infiltration basin. The next, uh, set of alternatives are, uh, two pumping station options. And I'm sure, showing these together because a lot of the parts, for instance, like the forest main and the inlet pipe that come in are very similar. The main difference here is really the pumps themselves. So we have a fixed pump station. And you can see on the picture on the bottom left, that's what it could look like where you have, uh, the wet well, uh, on the ground, and inside that wet well, you'd have two pump stations. Uh, and then these boxes up here contain the controls and the electrical interfaces, stuff like that. And then to the right, I show that mobile pump that the city's already purchased, but I'm guessing we would have a pad similar to what you see on the left, and then this mobile pump station would sit on that pad, uh, during use. So for both options, we would include a wet well and all of the adjacent site work around, um, the pump station itself. As far as getting the water from the Subzero Kettle to the wet well, we took an interesting approach for this. We understand that this is going to be a wetland area. There could be a lot of vegetation, uh, that is just free and floating around. This could plug inlets. So what we decided to do was lay down about five hundred feet of fifteen-inch perforated RCP pipe along the surface of the Subzero Kettle. And you can see that with the green line here. Uh, and the hope is, is that all of the holes in the perforated pipe will then allow the water to come in. If some of the holes start to get plugged, there's plenty of other holes that are still going to continue to work and allow that water to get to the wet well to be pumped out. The pump station's also going to require about seventeen hundred feet of eight-inch force main, and that shows up with this lighter green line. That runs along the west side of the Badger State Trail. And it would cross, uh, I guess just west of Business Park, a wet pond and would outlet into that pond as well. And in case you're wondering, well, where does the water go from there and how is it going to get downstream? Um, it's going to go from that Business Park Pond through the city infrastructure down to Seminole Village Pond, and then ultimately to Dunn's Marsh. So a few pros and maybe some cons for the fixed and the mobile options. The fixed option would have set on-off points, and we would be able to automate this. Let's say we said that there could be between zero and one foot of water in the pond. So we want the pond to start at a half a foot of depth. So when the pond's at ten fifteen point five, it can turn on. The, the fixed pump station can be set to do that. It, it requires zero staff hours to go out there and turn it on. We also talked about pumping for twelve hours, um, in the first part of the day and letting it set for the other twelve hours. There could be a timer that's set into that fixed pump station as well. So it really reduces, uh, staff hours that would be required to, to man it. Quite the opposite with the mobile option, to just go out there, turn it on. You have to fuel it. You know, there's just so, so many other things going on with the mobile option that it, it does require a lot more, uh, staff time out there to watch it. Looking at time to drain, the Subzero Kettle in days, the table to the right shows this. And this is, this is going to be twice as fast as the, uh, the other alternative I talked about because we only pump for twelve hours a day. This is pumping for twenty-four hours a day. So the hundred-year will pump out in about nineteen days, eighteen to nineteen days. One other thing I wanted to talk about is the hope here is, is that we can hold the water after the storm event within the Subzero Kettle and wait until the downstream system has time to drain out before we start sending more water in that direction. The last thing we would want to do is during the middle of a storm event, when those pipes are already probably at capacity, is start to send more water down there and potentially cause flooding. So that is our proposed approach with when to start pumping. Alternative B three, low-flow gravity pipe to Seminole Village Pond. This is the last drainage to Dunn's Marsh alternative. This consists of four thousand six hundred feet, uh, fifteen-inch storm sewer. Like it had a pretty flat grade, zero point two percent, but that's what's required to get from the middle of the Subzero Kettle, uh, up to Subzero Parkway, running along the north side of Subzero Parkway, and then along that western side of Seminole Highway. Uh, ultimately to connect into the Seminole, Seminole Center Court System. Uh, we would also include the five hundred feet of perforated RCP like I had talked about with the pump station options. This option also is going to include a control structure, so similarly, similarly to how I just discussed, operating those pump stations, waiting until after the storm event is done. We would do the same thing here, except we would be going out, or the city staff would be going out and opening the pumps. Some observations that we saw. Some observations that we saw putting this alternative together was it's going to be pretty deep. The average depth of the storm sewer is about nineteen feet. And in the middle, just south of Schuman Drive, there's a spot where it actually gets about twenty six feet deep. So it's going to be, it's going to take, I guess it's going to be more expensive to construct. The fifteen inch storm sewer at zero point two percent, we actually did a quick hand calculation on that. And with the pipe flowing half full, it does have a velocity of two feet per second. So based off of the WISDOT design standards, that's deemed self cleaning. So hopefully it doesn't get clogged. But one thing I failed to mention before was we're also proposing to put a five foot diameter manhole along Subzero Parkway that'll have a three foot something in it. And the hope is, is that that's also going to catch a lot of sediment. And like I said, it's going to be along Subzero Parkway, so it should be easy to maintain. So the final alternative is the low flow gravity pipe. That would allow us to drain the kettle south of Lacy Road up to the pump station that we would be proposing for Subzero Kettle. This includes two thousand feet of fifteen inch storm sewer, again, laid very flat, at zero point two percent. We would also have a control structure here on this option. One thing to note is similarly how we're waiting for the downstream system to drain before we allow this kettle to drain, we're going to wait for Subzero Kettle to drain down before we allow the kettle south of Lacy Road to drain down. And that will be controlled through this grate. We're also proposing to put a pyramid style grate on the inlet structure for this. And the hope is, is that as vegetation or trash starts to build up around the edge, we still have areas along the top that will take in water and allow this to drain out over time. Some quick observations from this alternative. The alignment follows that western edge of the Badger State Trail. This is going to be about ten feet deep with a max of thirteen. The kettle draw downtime is twenty two days. So twenty two days after the subzero kettle has been drawn down, this should be drawn down. I already talked to you about the two feet per second self cleaning stuff for the fifteen inch pipe. So after we studied all of these alternatives, we also looked at construction costs and twenty year operations and maintenance costs. And I just wanted to show a detail here of what each one of these looks like. I'm not going to get into specifics for each one. But on the left side of the slide, you can see one of our detailed opinion, opinion of probable construction costs detailed is what, is how I would put it. Each part of the alternative is listed here and cost out. Moving over to the operation maintenance side. Like I said, we did a twenty year operation maintenance cost for this. When we were looking at the alternatives, we looked at every five years that the infiltration basin was installed, we would go out or the city would go out and remove the sediment and do a deep tilling. And then on the tenth year and the twentieth year, you would also go out and remove the top foot of engineered soil that you placed in there. And you would completely replace that out and then reseed the pond. As far as the pump stations go, we looked at maintenance, operations and fueling. So as far as fueling goes, we looked at how efficient the mobile pump was and how much diesel it was going to take to drain an average annual rainfall event. And the same with the fixed pump station option. We looked at how much electricity, how much electricity it was going to take to run those pumps. So we investigated all of that. And we also looked at the amount of city staff hours that were necessary for each alternative. So looking at the construction costs and the twenty year O and M costs, we end up with a twenty year total cost for each alternative. And I just had a couple of quick summary points for each of the three types of alternatives that we have been discussing here today. So alternative A one, the infiltration inside the kettle footprint actually has the lowest twenty year cost for infiltration. However, that proximity to the groundwater makes it such that it's hard to depend on that infiltration capacity actually being available during a storm event. And therefore, we're going to choose to recommend alternative A two, even though it is slightly more expensive than alternative A one. Looking at the alternatives that drain down the Dunn's Marsh. We're, alternative B one, the fixed pump station has the lowest twenty year cost for drainage for Dunn's Marsh. So you can see, based off of the construction cost for the pump stations, the fixed pump actually is more expensive than the mobile pump. But as you go forward with that twenty year maintenance and the extra staff time involved to run the mobile pump, it actually works out that the fixed option is the cheaper option looking twenty years into the future. And then for alternative C one, the low flow gravity pipe to drain the kettle to the south, this provides a cost effective and sustainable approach to draining that. And as long as we can get gravity flow, that should always be the option, as long as it's cost effective. So recommendations, part of choosing the recommendations was creating this alternative matrix. It's a pretty big table, so I only showed the first two alternatives here. I'm not going to get into detail with each of these alternatives. I just wanted to show you that we looked at pros and cons for each alternative. We looked at the dependency on other alternatives. The time to drain the kettle, is land acquisition required? Is it considered sustainable? Is it effective? Does it have resiliency? And what are the costs? And with that, our recommended alternatives are the infiltration basin outside of the footprint of the subzero kettle, the pump station with the fixed pump and the low flow gravity pipe to drain the kettle south of Lacy Road. Also talking about a few other considerations, potentially recommendations as part of this that don't have a structural component or a construction component to it, is the establishment of a new flood protection elevation that takes into account the newer hundred year design storm rainfall amount. So when all of this, like back in twenty sixteen, when they initially looked at if the kettle had the capacity to handle the hundred year back to back events, they were using the approved rainfall amounts at that time, which was six inches per hour. It's since been added to now six point six, six inches per hour. So increasing that flood protection elevation, I think is warranted just based on that alone. And then the second is a policy decision to establish a pump service area to cover costs associated with operating and maintaining the pump station rather than using other funds in the stormwater utility. With that, I'll turn it back over to Claudia to talk about next steps.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for the very detailed presentation there. The next step here is for Strand to finalize the feasibility report. Once that's finalized, we're going to publish it on the website as shown below. After that, the costs that they've really dug into here are going to appear in the next version of the CIP for the proposed alternative. Then we really need to start talking to property owners about potential easements or a land acquisition to allow these options to be constructed. So the subzero kettle is located on Promega property. And then the kettle to the south is located on O'Brien property. The Badger State Trail is D and T property. And then we'll have to cross over some, some zero, the company's property as well. So they're currently, aside from the right of way, all of the other areas would need to be coordinated with those property owners for this, for this solution to occur. After that, permitting and design, I believe it's in the CIP for next year. And then construction would be the year after that. All right, so does anyone have any questions on what was presented here?
Yeah, I have a question. We're going to start. So, so is the, is the kettle is located in a private property? You know, you mentioned that is in Promega land. Why is the city has to cover, you know, all the cost?
So this really is a regional problem. I mean, the Promega property, it just happens to be the low point of the watershed. So, so yeah, that was, I guess, the thought process is that this really is a regional problem. It was considered as part of the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan when this was originally constructed and conceived that the city would be the one responsible for thinking about a pump station for this area.
Okay, and another question. When you mentioned that the costs, you know, the project are going to come in the CIP, so, so from which fund is going to be pay, pay all of this from the stormwater? Or, or from, I, I am not sure about, you know, which fund is responsible to pay for all of these costs?
So I know currently for this, this project, the one that Strand completed this year, I believe it was seventy five percent paid for out of TID nine, that the TID nine funds. And then twenty five percent was covered by the stormwater utility. And that's because, as you saw in that first slide, the study area includes a lot of that TID nine area, but there are other areas that are also draining to this as well. So, so that's how that cost breakdown was determined. I believe that the future costs are also the same, but I would, I would have to double check that. I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Okay, so practically is most of the cost is going to be absorbed by the TID number nine? Anyone has a question? Because I have another one.
Oh, I think I, okay, sorry, go ahead.
So my other question before Gabriela is, so you mentioned one of the alternative recommendation is to flow the water to the south, okay? So where is going to drain that water?
So, so the recommendation is actually to allow the water from the south to drain north. So, so if there's, so we'd, we'd put a pipe in to allow, and we'd keep the pipe closed normally because we wouldn't want water to back up in the other direction. But under, if, if there was a problem to the south, then we could open, open up that pipe and allow water from the south to drain to the north. And then ultimately it would be pumped.
So my question is, so I am confused. So if we want to get the water out of there, why we are going to bring more water here?
So if we want, if we want to be able to drain water from the kettle to the south, then we would kind of bring it to the kettle to the north so that it could be picked up by the pump and then pumped all the way north.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, we need to be, you know, we need to bring the water from the south to the north, but then we have to build the pump?
Right, exactly. So, so we wouldn't do alternate C three without doing,
Okay, okay, okay.
without doing the pump alternate as well. So that's a dependency, right?
Okay, 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 okay. Any question?
Gabriela?
Gabriela, yeah.
Yeah, so, so in terms of recommend, I have a few questions, but in terms of the recommendations, so it sounds like, it's like one from, one from A, one from B, one from C is kind of the recommendation?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so some passive, some active pumping and then potentially some gravity?
Right, so we're hoping that we can, so we had permitting discussions with the regulatory agencies and they really wanted to see the pumping kind of as a plan B approach, so to speak. And they really wanted to see infiltration here so that water stays within the watershed. So the idea was we would do some amount of infiltration to kind of tick that box on what they wanted to see and then still have the pumping in place.
Okay. My other two questions are actually informed a lot by what Phil presented right before this. And that, I, I'm glad to hear that the, like the, the matrix of recommendations includes energy usage because I think, you know, obviously that's part of the cost. But I think in terms of us achieving our climate change goals, like how much energy these things use should be a consideration that we should be looking at as a council, in my, in my opinion. And I don't know if Phil's had a chance to look at this, but I'd be interested in his perspective going into the final decision making process, whenever that would be. I think it'd be interesting to see what that, what that is. My other, so that's more of a comment. I guess my other, my question though, and maybe this is to Mike, is like, we're talking about a hundred year storms or hundred year back to back storms. Like have those predictions been updated in the new context of climate change? Because my understanding is that this region is going to get wetter, like more wet and then higher intensity storms. So I just feel like a hundred year flooding, like I guess we look at a back to back two hundred year flooding in a row. But I just like wonder if that, if that, that criteria is already too low based on where we are and where we're going to head in the future.
Sure. And that's why I talk, I, I tried to talk so strongly about those overland flow routes because I believe they provide resiliency to the system. So if you had a bigger storm event, you've got to wave that water to get out. But the rainfall amounts were just recently updated based off of NOAA Atlas fourteen data. So they've been collecting data for the last thirty years. And they were just recently updated. So like I said in the presentation, it went from six inches during a hundred year event to six point six six inches. So I, I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot, another point six inches, but it actually turns into a lot of stormwater runoff during a storm event.
Just to piggyback off of that, so, so as Mike said, that NOAA Atlas fourteen was updated in twenty fifteen to increase that storm event from six to six point six six inches. But even that is based on data that's ten years old. Because, you know, it takes a while for them to collect the data and then assess it and publish a new standard. So, so even that data at this point, even the, the new one from, from twenty fifteen is still considered out of date. Actually, recently Madison has been looking into updating their, their ordinance. So instead of the hundred year storm event, they, they would be requiring the two hundred year storm event, which, which they're doing kind of as a surrogate for the, the actual, the actual current one hundred year event. Sorry, I'm not doing a good job explaining this. But, but the feeling is that the two hundred year event in NOAA Atlas fourteen, based on data that's been collected at UW for the last forty plus years, the, the two hundred NOAA Atlas fourteen event is actually closer to the one hundred event that, that we're actually seeing. So, so even that six point six six, a lot of people think that's not even sufficient, sufficiently representative of what the real one hundred year event is.
Okay, Gabriela, do you have another one? Because I have other people that,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I call you after, Tom. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I have kind of a general question. It has to do with North Stoner Prairie being developed. There's an O'Brien farm there that is, it's right next to the old barn that's going to probably be redeveloped. The intersection is going to be redeveloped. Then you go on Lacy Road to the west, that's going to be redeveloped in the future. What does this impact have on the kettle? Do you, do you guys, are you aware of that? Or have you taken any of the, the construction into, into, into account?
Yeah, I can talk to this one. We, we understand and actually that's something that has been changing as we've been working on the project as far as the solar fields and then the potential development occurring to the west of that. But we did look at current land use conditions and also an ultimate build out condition and made sure that we ran the modeling for those and report the high water elevations for both the current conditions and the ultimate land use conditions. So I'd like to say we were accounting for that in this current study.
Because it's in District Four that I represent and it, a lot of farmers have talked to me about this. What I just spoke about is huge to the city. I mean, it's huge. It's going to come. And it's going to come probably when you retire. And it's going to come without a doubt. And at the corner of Lacy and Seminole there, right at that corner, there's an empty lot. Is, was there any thought or does anybody approach you or talk to you about another retention pond in this area? Is, was there any thought, or has anybody approached you or talked to you about another retention pond in this area? Right now, the city has, there's area to do it. I don't know if it's something to do, but I, there's area to do it. And, um, you guys are pumping all this water to the north. I don't know, I question that.
So are you talking about kind of that triangular piece to the southwest of the intersection there? That's kind of between Seminole Highway, the Battersea Trail, and...
Right, right, right in there, there's a, there's a
There it is.
Empty lot there.
That's right, that's what you're talking about?
Right, right. There's an empty lot there. I'm not saying tomorrow it's for sale, but there's an empty lot there. If you just go to the north, there's a barn that's about ready to fall down, and then there's your O'Brien home. So there is area there that, uh, I don't own it, but it could be talked about.
Yeah, so, so we did look specifically at that triangular piece, um, to see if that would be, um, sorry, south of Lacy Road, um, to see if that would be, uh, a viable spot to put an infiltration basin. Um, and, and the determination was no for a couple of reasons. Um, one, MGNE has really high-pressure gas mains going through that, and there's a pretty wide berth on either, either side of the mains where you can't, um, construct anything. So, so we wouldn't want to put, um, a stormwater facility on top of those. Uh, it seems like a pretty, um, volatile area to, to be digging in the ground. In fact, even if we wanted to do soil borings there, they said that they would want, um, someone on-site, um, just in case anything were to happen, because those are such, um, high-pressure gas mains in that area. Um, and then kind of the other reason why, uh, we decided to no longer look at that area for an infiltration basin was, um, we suspect that's wetland, and you really can't put a, um, stormwater facility within an area that's already designated as wetland. Yeah, so, so we, we didn't really consider that as a viable option.
Uh, I have another question, may I, for Mike? We are pumping all this water north to Dunn Marsh. How do we know that Dunn Marsh can absorb all of this capacity? Have you done any study there?
Now, uh, we haven't done any studies as part of this. You know, one of the things that I had talked about was giving us the flexibility to open or close a valve or turn the pump on when the downstream system had capacity. So that's one thing that should be looked at as well is, what does Dunn's Marsh look like? Is it almost up to Seminole Highway? Uh, you know, can it take more water? Definitely something that, that we need to think about, but, you know, talking with the DNR, that's why they wanted to encourage us to do infiltration first and only pump or drain to the north when we absolutely need to, um, for that reason.
Uh, do I have another one? Dorothy?
Yeah, for, um, Dunn's Marsh, for sure, um, you can't add a lot more water than their usual max without flooding both Capacity Trail and Cannonball Trail. Um, those are probably the low spot. They already get some flooding. Um, City of Madison is doing a stormwater study that includes Dunn's Marsh. Um, don't know that everyone here knows that the City of Madison actually owns Dunn's Marsh. It's within Fitchburg, but we do not own it. It, it is part of the City of Madison, comes down through Allied Drive. The questions that I had was, first off, before we started using that piece of land for farmland and everything else, what, what was nature doing with it?
Well, that, that's a great question. I, I mean, as far back as I can go is nineteen thirty-seven, and during that time, it was already being farmed. Uh, but guessing before then, it probably was a low-lying wetland-type area. You know, back in nineteen thirty-seven, they probably didn't care if it was a wetland. They were gonna farm that area, and they just went through and, and tilled it and, and moved forward. But, um, as far back as I know, it's, it's been farmland.
Where I, where, where I end up going often is to question whether it may be a piece of land that nature wants and wants us to work with nature to perhaps make it parkland. And as Dunn's Marsh is, is a, a big puddle with a lot of conservancy and parkland-type space. If we're doing all of this so that the land adjacent to it can be developed, is that really the best thing that we could be doing? Or would we be better off to work more in accord with what nature would do? And maybe expand the size of the kettle where it is now and make it into a mondo rain garden sort of thing that would, um, soak up a lot of water also? I'm not at all convinced that developing that land is worth all that we're talking about here.
Okay, yeah.
Right after that?
Okay. Yes, please. You can answer.
Okay, well, I could take a shot. I, I mean, I know that, uh, that area to the south of the Sub-Zero Kettle has, pretty much on every plan document that I've looked at, has been shown to, um, be developed out. And I'm guessing it's going to be some pretty expensive land, uh, to purchase at this point. But that's all, I mean, that's the only thing that I could think of that, that, uh, would be something against your idea. I, I like the idea myself, uh, but we're kind of constrained within the parcels that we own right now.
Right, and I guess I'll add that, um, you know, the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan has already been adopted by council and published in 2013. Um, so I think, um, what the parcels are and what they could be, I think that was discussed at that time. That's not really part of this study.
But this is new information that would be added to that, right?
So as part of, as part of the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan, they did recommend looking into pumping options for this kettle. Um, so this is kind of just a continuation on a recommendation from the, from the Neighborhood Plan.
Okay, uh, next is Tom. Tom?
Claudia, I have to come back to you in reference to your comment. Somebody just texted me and pointed out to me that, um, I think what you're talking about is not where I'm talking. Um, if you go down Lacy Road and you make a right turn on the Seminole Highway, I'm talking about right there by the barn. I'm talking about that area right by the barn that's falling apart. And I'm pretty sure you were talking about over by the gas company, over by, you were, um, you were south of Lacy Road. That's not where I'm talking. Are we talking about the same thing?
Are you talking this? Can you see my?
Yeah.
This is the parcel you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he's looking at.
I think that's it, yes. Right. And you, is that where you were talking about, um?
My apologies.
I think you were on the other side of the road.
The parcel to the south, you're correct. So, so that area, uh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that's pretty high up, um, if we look at the contours, um.
Uh, boy, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Did you look at that or not? You mean it's, maybe you didn't even look at that?
I mean, it, it's kind of a similar story to, you know, what are we, could we extend to the south? And, uh, as part of the North Stoner Prairie Area Plan, this area was delineated as, I'm guessing that's commercial.
I can, I can help you out there. Years ago, there were, there are, there are, years ago, there were pigs on that corner, and that was owned by the O'Briens. And that's all gone, and I believe that's owned by Payne and Dolan right now. Just that little piece on the corner there.
Um, so yeah, so to answer your question, nobody approached us about that parcel in particular. I don't know what the owners', um, intentions are for that parcel. Um, but I would assume that they are planning to use it for the zoned purpose.
So all, okay, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so all along in this process, you guys have really looked at pumping water to the north pretty much all along. And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. Does that sound right?
So there were other options that were considered. Um, another option was pumping west to Goose Lake, um, or potentially even, um, doing a gravity option all the way five-plus miles to the south. Those are kind of, are options that are available in order to get this water to a navigable waterway. The idea of pumping to the north really rose to the top as the most feasible option, um, just because the distance that we would need to pump is a lot shorter by miles to do it in this direction than the other directions that I mentioned. Um, so this is, even though it's an expensive project, this is the least expensive project of, of the different directions we could go with the water.
Okay, so, but this is my question to you is, yeah, you said this is the cheaper, this is the feasible, but we are pumping water to the north, to Dunn Marsh, but we haven't done any study. But we, as a council now, I need to pump on this. I don't know, I need to know what is gonna happen to Dunn Marsh.
So...
You know, if we send all this water over there, you know, I think we need to have another piece of information is missing here to see how all this pumping water north is gonna affect Dunn Marsh and areas, you know what I mean?
And, and so that was actually part of the purpose of doing our temporary pumping plan, which we did over this past year, is to see how the downstream areas would be impacted. Um, so, so what we did during our temporary pumping plan was kind of a dry run of what this, um, permanent pumping plan would look like. And so what we did is we pumped to the north, and we had staff observe water along the way just to see how, how it would look and to make sure it wasn't causing problems downstream. Um, really, if it's a sunny day, if it's a sunny day pumping operation, which is what's being proposed, we're proposing to pump when it's not currently raining. This is a very normal amount that the stormwater system is very, very capable of handling. And this is the kind of flows that the stormwater system would see, um, when it rains. Um, so, so this is not, we're not sending such a high amount of water that this is something that Dunn's Marsh has never seen before. We would pump during dry weather conditions, and it would be flow rates that the system is very capable of handling.
But my question to you, for how many days do you obs- obs- observe that, you know, when you were pumping temporarily last summer, you know, was it a period of time like, statistically, it, it makes sense? So it was two or three days, or what happened?
Right, it was over, I, I believe it was a month and a half, and we went out there once a week to look at the downstream areas and take photos of, of what was going on and was being observed. We didn't see any problems, um, with, with the water that was being pumped. Um, and the pumping rate of the, of the pump, I mean, for the, for the mobile option, that would be exactly the same rate, because we would use the, the exact same pump. Um, and then for the fixed pump option, we could also set the pump to, to pump at the same rate as what we did during our, um, during our dry run.
But my question is, okay, so my, okay, so who is next? Uh, Gabriela?
No, I think I'm good. We can, we can move on.
Uh, Gabriela, then, Dorothy, do you have something to say?
I, um, I was just pointing out that I looked up on DCI map, and it shows that that, the farm that Tom was talking about is at ten-thirty elevation.
And just to give that some context, the bottom of the kettle is ten-fifteen. So it's about fifteen feet higher than the bottom of the kettle.
Okay, um, and one of my, my question that, for curiosity, why is this kettle, uh, the water is continued to raise? What is the issue? Is because the, the water table are, are high, or what is the issue?
Yeah, it's a couple things. I mean, we've had, uh, some pretty wet years, and I think twenty nineteen has actually set a record for rainfall amounts. So that's not helping. Uh, with the wet years, yes, the groundwater table's rising, for sure. But we also have just the water that drains to the kettle coming there and sitting, and it has no way to get out. And today, it's really depending on, uh, mostly evaporation to drain out that pond. So trying to incorporate some sort of infiltration or, or, uh, pumping it down is the best, best way to do that. And actually, the DNR is on board with us pumping it out. They, they're the ones that actually said pumping to the north sounds like the best option for a Plan B option during our coordination meetings with the DNR. So this isn't something that we just made up on our own. We, we've had coordination meetings all along with the DNR about this, talked to them about going to the south. They had their reasons, uh, for us not going to the south, because there's a cold-water fish community that way, and they didn't want us to, uh, hurt the fish. Obviously, going to Goose Lake, that area's already got issues, just like Dunn's Marsh does. Boy, we tried to, it's a tough area for sure, and we're trying to balance it all.
Uh, next, Gabriela.
Do, can you, could you go back to, you had a slide where you were talking about the different layers? Because there's two aquifers, and there's some clay layers in between that's preventing, like, the water is, just isn't draining into the groundwater table, is that right? Which is why we have to create... Reason?
Right, it's not getting down to that groundwater table and think about, well, could we potentially dig this whole thing out, or maybe even a portion, uh, to try to get down to that lower groundwater elevation? Um, but it would be, you know, if you add all of these up, it starts to add up, uh, nineteen, twenty-one and a half feet that we would have to excavate out. And so it quickly removes that alternative from, from the field of alternatives.
But it would go down to that, through that first, um, layer of clay, the infiltration basin, or?
If, if we wanted to, but no, uh, the proposed infiltration basin that we have planned does not.
Oh, it does not?
Sorry, sorry, Mike, I think, I think she was talking about that top clay layer. So, so there's ten inches of topsoil and then two and a half inches, or two and a half feet of clay. So that, that would be removed.
Right, oh, I apologize, yes.
We just need to go to the, to the aquifer that's even deeper than that.
Right.
And right now, the, the kettle water is above that two-and-a-half-foot layer of clay. So it, it's not even, it's not getting into even that, that aquifer, not the deep one, but even the one just below that.
And that's, that's based off of the two data points we have in the bottom of the pond. Obviously, we have regulations to go out and get more as design moves forward. Um, that's what we're seeing today.
Right, and, and Gabriela, just to answer that question, um, the, 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 there are two aquifers, as you said, a lower aquifer and a perched aquifer. The perched aquifer is actually on top of that five feet of clay. And then the lower aquifer is beneath that five feet of clay.
Okay.
Um, so, so nothing is sitting on top of that two-point-five feet of clay.
Got it. Okay.
Right, yeah, it's the upper is sitting, where the perch is sitting in this area.
I have another question is, have you checked with other, um, municipality that I assume in here in Dan County and surrounding areas, it has some similar issue with this kettle? Have you checked if, if it has some situation like this one, and what, what, um, what, what they, they have done to alleviate, to mitigate, um, you know? what, what they, they have done to alleviate, to mitigate, um, you know, uh, the flooding of their kettles?
Um, well, we really based the infiltration option off of an option that was done in Stoughton at the new Walmart, uh, there. They did the exact same thing, where they have an enclosed kettle, where they pumped to an infiltration basin and allowed that to drain. That's been in for a few years now, and it's actually working pretty well. So that's that part. We do have discussions in the report about other kettles. I mean, the groundwater is high, and this isn't the only kettle that's having issues. There's other kettles across the state where they're trying to drain those down, because they're getting up to points where they're actually flooding out adjacent structures.
Yeah, and I know Madison, um, or I guess, uh, i- i- in the, oh, is it Madison or north of Madison, um, with Crystal Lake and Fish Lake, that's another area where there's a kettle that's getting high enough to actually impact structures, which isn't really the case here. We, we don't have any built structures currently that would be, um, impacted by, by this. Um, and, uh, I think they're actually looking at putting in a, um, a gravity drain, drain pipe, um, was, was what they were looking at, and that was multi-million dollars to do.
I think around six million.
Six million, okay.
Through a little tributary there. They were taking it to a major river. Uh, and that makes a big difference. You know, we were talking about going south to some unnamed tributary, to Story Creek. So it, it makes a big difference what you can drain to as well, and, and what your ability is.
Okay, uh, it's, it's nine-thirty, so anyone has any other question? I think this is very interesting, um, a learning, um, moment for me. Um, um, so I am, you know, I am very curious about why this kettle is growing. Um, so, I don't know, anyone has the last question? No? I don't see, okay, so thank you very mu- much, Mike and Claudia.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Uh, Carl, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we are at the end of our meeting, so our next meeting will be March twenty-four. We have two presentations. Uh, one is, um, the BI Committee is gonna do a presentation, and then the second one is, I think it's Claudia is coming back with another study presentation. I don't remember, but, um...
I think that's the Lake Barney Study.
Oh, Lake Barney, yes, and no, okay, thank you, Mike, okay. So, um, so I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nay, the motion is approved, so good night, thank you.
See you.